Okay, good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Agenda-setting work session for Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is nine oh two A M. My name is Ty Mertzer, Chair of the Board. Commissioners Carolina Mejia, Rachel Grant, Emily Klaus, and we are participating virtually. In the room, we have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Jennifer Walker, and Chair of the Board Amy Davis. Meeting being recorded and will be posted to the Thurston County YouTube channel within twenty-four hours. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting. Distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Actually, may be taken officially. Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings just joining me to my right. First up this morning is review of first review of next week's business agenda for the September sixteenth meeting. That meeting will be called to order at two P M. Per usual. Pledge allegiance to be led by Commissioner Fournier. Land acknowledgement approval of agenda. We have a proclamation regarding National Recovery Month, and it is a more of a.
Yes.
Explain it, Chair of the Board.
Community engagement presentation proclamation, and we will have the Resource Hub, Hope and Healing Clinic, Northwest Resources, and various speakers with lived experience joining us.
Okay, and then a brief recess, per photo and et cetera.
Yes.
Any questions regarding National Recovery Month proclamation? Okay, we'll have public comment related to items on the agenda and county manager update.
I don't have anything to report at this time.
Okay. Perfect, then we'll go to consent items. We have one through twelve proposed. Number one, resolution to reclassify fiscal manager to senior management analyst for emergency services, H R Director Maria Ponte.
Good morning, Commissioners. Maria Ponte, H R Director. I actually have items one and two that are from Emergency Services, the Medic One Division, so I'll cover those together if I'm okay.
If I could, wanted to thank you started this morning, but saying good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you and Ben for working together. We know it's been a busy start to the week, but for additional background, Commissioners, you'll find in your email can read later this week some background that they provided on why these positions are being recommended to reclass. So we always always appreciate the extra information for the Commissioners in between first review and second review. So let us know if you have any questions, but please take it away.
Great, yes. So Emergency Services has been reorganizing the Medic One program. They're trying to structure it in a way that meets the service demands and eliminates some stakeholder confusion and restructuring for better alignment. So they're requesting to reclass a fiscal manager to a senior management analyst, and that's because the roles and responsibilities of this position have expanded along with the complexity of the financial oversight required. They do a lot of cross-agency and jurisdictional coordination during emergencies. And this position is the financial coordinator during countywide emergency events, and they facilitate the federal multimillion-dollar reimbursements for large scales, emergencies, natural disasters, pandemic responses. And the position has overall responsibility for complying with complex federal, state, and local financial and legal regulations. So before I move on to the second request, let me know if you have any questions, and I'll pause.
Questions? Let's see.
So the second request is when this department was initially established, they they aligned duties by basic life and advanced life, and with time, they've just discovered that has not been the most clear and efficient way to organize. So what they're doing is requesting to reclassify the basic life support program manager to a Medic One program manager. There this results in these positions splitting the clinical duties and operational tasks to better serve the E M S system, allowing for physician specialization that needs to occur. In terms of funding for this these positions, they are supported by the Medic One levy. There is no impact to the general fund, and they can afford to absorb it in this year, and this has been forecasted into their tenure plan.
Appreciate the fiscal responsibility that Ben and this team are looking down the road. So all done.
Any questions on? E M S request. We'll keep going. It's up with Richard Fournier. Super good.
The next item will be presented by Ruth Elder. It looks like she's on the screen. But I will go ahead and join her if there's any other questions.
Good morning, Ruth. You're up.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Commissioners. I'm Ruth Elder from the Board of Equalization at Human Resources. And this is an annual item for which the Board of Equalization requires the Commissioner's approval. The Board of Equalization is requesting to convene for the purposes of hearing property assessment appeals for the two thousand and twenty-four assessment year pursuant to R C W eighty-four point forty-eight point oh one oh. And in this case, the Board of Equalization, to be a week, with the permission of the county legislative authority, can convene at any time when the petitions exceed twenty-five or ten percent of the number of appeals filed in the preceding year, whichever is greater. With the number of cases we have, it's always the ten percent from the previous year. So the number of appeals we had filed for the two thousand and twenty-four assessment year, which was eight hundred and eight, exceeds ten percent of the number of petitions filed for the twenty-three assessment year, which was six hundred and two. Therefore, the Board of Equalization is requesting the approval of the Board of County Commissioners to convene to hear these petitions for the two thousand and twenty-four assessment year and request that the Board of County Commissioners sign the notice of approval form. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
It shows that from what I understand, this is an annual process. Procedurally, it needs to take place. Appreciate your work, Ruth.
Yes, my pleasure.
Anything from Commissioners? I see nothing, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next up is sole source agreement for One Health Port. This is a public health and social services item, as are the next seven.
Good morning. Jenny Fry height, Public Health and Social Services Director. This is a move to approve a sole source participation agreement with One Health Port for the purchase of the annual subscription to One Health Port Health Information Exchange for eleven thousand, one hundred dollars. This agreement with One Port Health, H I E, will allow for the integration between the Department of Health, Washington Immunization Information System, we call it W A I I S, with the electronic record that we have within P H S S called Advanced M D. And it will allow us to enter patient records, which will transfer into the W A I I S in the background, and therefore improving our efficiencies, information quality, decrease in entering errors, and ease for patients to access their vaccine records. And so this step will support the efforts to advance technology further within P H S S and within our electronic health record system. It was approved by Brandon acting as internal auditor on seven eight twenty-five as far as the sole source.
Questions for Dr. Fry height?
Thank you.
Next item up, Thurston County Criminal Justice Treatment Account Plan update. Do you have some information provided to the board previously?
Exactly. This is a move to approve the updated C J T A or Criminal Justice Treatment Account Plan detailing uses of the C J T A funds from the Healthcare Authority as recommended by the local Criminal Justice Treatment Account Panel. And this funding must be spent on substance use disorder treatment and recovery support services for individuals involved in the criminal justice system, so it is very specific to that. Pursuant to state law, a local C J T A panel comprised of representatives of Superior Court, Drug Court, Public Defense, Prosecuting Attorney, the Sheriff's Department, Alcohol and Drug Coordinator, and a Substance Use Treatment Provider must agree to a plan for how to spend these funds, and an update to this plan is due to the Healthcare Authority by October one, two thousand and twenty-five, and e-brief was sent yesterday. And the local C J T A panel must seek the approval of this plan by the Board of County Commissioners in order to submit it by October first. And I have Shaylan Sowers here to help answer any questions.
Shaylan, so I might have missed an attachment, but in reading the what I remember reading yesterday, kind of gave a great overview. But did it have the actual recommendations for this coming year? Okay, I must have missed that piece. Was that an attachment?
It should have been attached, and if it's not, I can make sure that you get that.
Okay, well, I can I can catch up on that. I missed that piece.
And if any Commissioners have any questions as they read through the information between now and the second reading, just let us know. We're happy to answer those questions.
Richard Grant.
Yeah, not very many questions. I just wanted to make a comment. I did read through it this morning. I actually sit as the Washington State Association of Counties Representative on the C J T A statewide panel, and and I just want to make a comment to Shaylan and to Jennifer that this plan was very well-written and good job, and it has, you know, all the different pieces in it, so I just was really excited to see it, and and I'm really excited about the work that's going to get done with the funding, so good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions for? Then? Okay, and I see the chart right here. Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. So thank you.
Shaylan, before you leave the table, just a special thanks to you. I know you have a wonderful team on D S T, and it's been a lot of back and forth, but really appreciate your commitment and dedication to working through those numbers and presentation that's coming to the board.
Thank you. Happy to do it.
Next item is amendments to homeless prevention contracts with C Y S and Family Support Center.
Yes, this is a request for the Board to approve contract amendments with the Family Support Center of South Sound and Community Services for a total increased value of ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and sixty-nine cents for the rental assistance programs utilizing local home funds. Just a bit of a background, in April, two thousand and twenty-five, the P H R R amended two contracts with partners in prevention education that provided funding for rent assistance activities to close out activities under those contracts. One contract was funded under local home fund resources, and after repayment of all eligible invoices under the contract, there remained that balance of ninety-two thousand, and it was remained unspent. So to respect the intent of the intended use of these funds for rental assistance activities, O H H P is seeking to add these to available add these available funds to the rent assistance. So on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Board of County Commissioners approved contracts to Community Services and Family Support Center of South Sound for rent assistance programs, and these contracts continue the state-funded eviction prevention rental assistance program, which is now known as homeless prevention. And the available funds will be shared equally between the two agencies with forty-six thousand approximately added to each contract. And both agencies have indicated that there remains unmet rent unmet rent assistance needs in the populations that they serve and that they can quickly spend these funds.
And if I may add, Chair, something that was brought up by the Board a couple of months back was an interest in how public health and social services have enhanced their contracts. So the team is working on an e-brief, and we'll get that information out and turn that into a work session if needed, but I appreciate the work that they've done to fortify the county's position. They have some ideas about additional contract changes that they'll explore with the P A O's office and continue to work through. There's definitely been enhancement from over the last several, was it, it's been a little year or so?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll get that information over to you so you can see a red line, some unique changes that have been made.
Okay, any questions for the team on item? Six. Okay, then we'll move to item seven, which is setting a public hearing on two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and thirty, five-year homeless housing plan.
This is a request for the Board to set a public hearing for Tuesday, October twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, at three thirty P M. Or as soon after, as the matter may be heard, to receive and consider public comments on the two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and thirty five-year homeless housing plan for submission to the Washington State Department of Commerce. On August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, staff brought provided a briefing to the Board of County Commissioners regarding the five-year homeless housing plan. And again, Tom Webster here to answer any questions.
Questions for Tom? Very good. All right, thank you. Moving on, more public health items. Contract with Low Income Housing Institute, or L I H I, Fleetwood Apartment Elevator Modernization.
Yes, thank you. This is a move to approve a contract with the Low Income Housing Institute, or L I H I, for the total amount of one hundred and three thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ten cents for the modernization of the Fleetwood Apartment Elevator. In July, two thousand and twenty-five, L I H I applied to the Regional Housing Council's Affordable Housing Advisory Board Opportunity Fund. The Opportunity Fund was created by the Advisory Board set as set aside as a funding to award to projects who are seeking funding outside of the R H C's annual request for proposals or R F P process. To receive an award from the Opportunity Fund, the project must be emergent in nature, have been unforeseen at the time of the most recent R F P, and need funding to actualize the project. And the Thurston County Affordable Housing Advisory Board, T H A B, T A H A B, reviewed and discussed the application on July seventeenth and recommended funding for this project. This recommendation was then presented to the R H C at their July twenty-third meeting, and the R H C unanimously approved the recommendation to fund the project funds for this project that will come from the local home fund. Answer any questions?
Questions on item eight? Okay, let's go to item nine, Contract with Rebuilding Together, Thurston County Critical Home Repair.
This is a request for the Board to approve a contract with Rebuilding Together Thurston County for their Critical Home Repair Program in the total amount of three hundred thousand, and this is supporting twenty-five households with this award as recommended by the Regional Housing Council. Rebuilding Together Thurston County, R T T C, applied to Thurston County's Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention request for proposals for affordable housing capital projects in February, two thousand and twenty-five. The application included a request for funding to support the Critical Home Repair Program, which provides critical home repairs to low-income homeowners at no cost. The Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board recommended this funding award to the R H C at the April ninth meeting, which received unanimous approval, and the Board of County Commissioners approved the preliminary funding award for this project at the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting.
So is it just taking this time to get the like actual specific contract? Like, why is this? I mean, usually we have a package of approvals, and why is this coming just kind of as a one-off?
Yeah, so it's for the affordable housing dollars are a little bit different. So in June, you approve the package for all the homeless services dollars, and we had all those contracts ready to go. In June, these funds don't become available until September first because of our program year, and so we'll be bringing forward you the individual projects once the contracts are ready. Also with capital projects, they take a little longer to get the contract. Some of them, depending on the funding source, may need an environmental review. They may have other sources of funding that are coming into the project, so we'll be bringing these contracts individually to you once they're ready for actual execution.
But we've already.
You've made a preliminary approval of of the awards, so we can move forward. But we didn't have an actual contract for your approval at that time.
Okay. Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you. I know Rebuilding Thurston does a lot of work with a lot of veterans and veteran households, and I'm wondering, is there any coordination with Mark and just because I know the the home fund is definitely going through the same story that the rest of our funds are going through in terms of the strain, and so I'm wondering if, you know, there's a possibility for any coordination there, especially if they're helping veterans that qualify kind of for that veterans in our community.
I'll find out and get back to you. I know that the that they were working with Habitat for Humanity, but I'm not sure about this organization, so I'll find out, let you know.
Thank you.
Well, just to be clear, the Board will see others in the plan come to them for probable and individual contracts. Correct. Okay, yeah, as I reported last week, I think I took the went to a site visit to a place where they were doing some of this work, and it's pretty interesting because they it's like I don't think there's any other organization that like fits this particular gap, like they 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 target houses that are like borderline going to become uninhabitable if they don't, you know, get flooring replaced or roofing handled, and folks would have no other means of doing it. So it's basically saving housing from being from falling into disrepair and people becoming homeless. So it's really kind of like plugging right into a gap, because I don't think like any other group does that kind of stuff, so I think this was a good choice from what I could see.
Definitely hits on that prevention side. Several they do A D A ramps as well for people who have now fallen into a disability where they'll need that access to home, so yeah.
All volunteer work, so it's.
So it's pretty pretty great work.
Kind of like a shoestring budget, because they get basically like Home Depot and places like that donate the supplies, and then the labor is like is is donated to volunteer, so it's just like minimal amounts of money here and there to get like a pretty big project like completed. But they have to have it, so pretty cool. Okay, let's move on then to item ten. Takes us to Public Works. Thank you, Public Health. Public Works team for setting a public hearing to consider updates to Thurston County Code, Chapter fifteen dot fourteen, solid waste charges.
Morning Commissioners. Jeff Big Bird, Solid Waste Manager. This is a request to set up a public hearing for October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, three thirty P M. Or as soon afterward as the matter occurred, to consider updates to Thurston County Code, Chapter fifteen dot fourteen. So a little background on that is Public Works has the authority to collect solid waste charges under Thurston County Code, Chapter fifteen dot fourteen, solid waste charges. This chapter includes due dates for payments, penalty rate amounts, computed penalty rates, notice of overdue accounts, and notification procedures. Thurston County Public Works is proposing an ordinance to revise and amend this section of Thurston County Code. The ordinance would revise the date for assessing delinquent penalties for solid waste charges from sixty days to thirty days, so reducing that amount of time. And expediting customer notice prohibiting further disposal until balances are paid in full for overdue accounts, which currently stands at ninety days, but reduce that down to sixty days. These code changes are intended to reduce financial risks to the county, accelerate payment for services rendered, and improve financial practices and align county's financial policy thirty fifty. Draft ordinance has been reviewed by the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, who made a recommendation to the Board. Option. An e-brief was sent to the Board on this particular issue on August twenty-eighth as well, so that's that. Any questions?
This is separate. Looking into County Manager, there's also like I saw some, there was emails describing an effort to take some of our fee structures and make them like ordinances, changes by ordinance rather than code, but that's not what this is. This is separate.
That will be coming separately shortly.
There's a public hearing that will be needed on that too.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, so any questions on the? This one, which I do remember getting that e-brief. Okay, thank you. October twenty-first will be that. Okay, next up is Sheriff's Office item, Request for Proposals for Inmate Telephone System and Video Visitation System. Under Sheriff Mansius, I see is online.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ruben Mansius, Under Sheriff. The Sheriff's Office is requesting permission to issue a request for proposal for inmate phone and video visitation services at the Thurston County Corrections Facility. The current contract for inmate phone and video visitation services for the Thurston County Corrections Facility expires in December of this year. The Sheriff's Office is also requesting permission to execute a contract with the successful bidder upon completion of the R F P process.
Who is the current provider, do you know?
It's currently through Viapath.
And has that been, in your estimation, a successful contract or a successful system?
It has so far. There were some changes to the rules that they had to follow as far as phone calls that were made and who makes commissions on that, but currently, the way it stands, we we earn a small, the Sheriff's Office will earn a small commission on the video phone visitations and phone calls that they're making, and that commission goes into the concession fund for the inmates. It's usually it's small, about seventy thousand dollars a year or so. It returns to the concession fund. And obviously, the the contract aligns with what the prisoners will have to pay for the visitation phone services. So we're just trying to make that in line and get the best contract available for them.
Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you. Um, this is more for can we get a copy of the video visitation R F P and the R F P advertising? It didn't download into the system quite well, so.
Yes, I can.
Make sure it gets downloaded, but then also we'll send it out to all of the.
Okay, any other questions for Under Sheriff? All right, very good. Let's go on. We have voucher list for is item twelve for the week of August eighteen. There's no questions there. We'll look at department items, which are under Public Health and Social Services. And the first one is amendment number nine to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract.
Move quick. No problem.
You moved too fast for me. All right. Jennifer Fry height, Jen Fry height, please. I see I'm all confused now. Public Health and Social Services Director. All right, this is a request for the Board to approve Amendment number nine to the Washington State Department of Health's Consolidated Contract, providing an increase of four million, one hundred and two thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars for revised maximum consideration of ten million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the duration of January one, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-seven. This adds statement of work statements of work to the following programs. F P H S Office Office of Immunization, Perinatal Hepatitis B, Office of Resiliency and Health Security, which is our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant, F E P. And it amends statements of work for the E L C Fund Injury and Violence Prevention, which is our overdose data to action, and Maternal Child Health Block Grant. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. When you're saying it amends the statements of work, does it, is there any impact to our the work that we're already doing? Like, what do you?
For these three particular, no. It's always just different amendments that they're stating, reclassifying the data they want to receive sometimes, or or it could be the reports that we need to turn out or things like that. So it's more logistical in the background for these particular ones on this amendment.
This is a hefty number, so is this like in line with our budget projection, or is this less money or more money, or do you, do you know?
Correct. Part of this is because of that E L C funding. That was the money that was set to end on July first, and they had it, they added extra money that we now have until December to spend, but is very specific money that relates to not just COVID, but response and and outcomes from COVID, and so we are unsure if we'll be able to spend all of that very particular money by December, but it is adding it in as the ability to bill for that if we needed to.
And otherwise, we just return it back to the state.
Correct.
Can I ask a follow-up on the those? So outcomes for COVID, like what? Is it just because the trends are going up for COVID again? Like, what what specific?
Um, I they didn't really say, but I believe they just had the extra money that they couldn't spend down, and so then they are allowing locals to spend that down instead of ending on July first through December. And so this was all that epidemiological and laboratory capacity that started during COVID, but it continued to allow us to extend our epidemiology and laboratory work, which included immunizations, getting COVID vaccine out there, messaging on COVID vaccine, all of that sort of thing, so especially with the new state health order on COVID vaccine and the new agreement for the three western states. They're expecting more work to increase on that, but still a small amount of work in between now and December.
Okay, thank you for that.
The first thing you just said, there a new state order regarding that? Can you explain that?
Yeah, so the state just put out a health order that basically instruct it'll make vaccine access easier for pharmacies, doctors' offices, that Washington has stated we can administer vaccine for those ages six months and older. It doesn't make the access to the vaccine easier, because currently the only vaccine available is the private vaccine. The public available vaccine hasn't come out yet, but it will make it easier and more clear for doctors' offices and pharmacies to be able to administer vaccine when they get it. Come.
Any questions on this item? Additional questions? Okay, thank you. Let's go to item two, Amendment number one, to contract with L I H I for Maple Court.
This is a move to approve this amendment with the Low Income Housing Institute, or L I H I, for operations of Maple Court Enhanced Shelter to extend. for operations of Maple Court Enhanced Shelter to extend the end date of their previous contract to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and to increase the contract amount by eight hundred thousand in Inemic Resolution Program funding. On August nineteenth, the Board of County Commissioners approved the new contract for L I H I at two point nine million to fund Maple Court operations between July one, twenty twenty-five, and June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. And P H S S is currently engaged in negotiations with L I H I regarding the scope of work for the new contract. But negotiations are expected to continue through September with final contract execution occurring not until possibly October.
And what I'll add to this, Commissioners, is I really appreciate Public Health in working with the City of Lacey, other providers, for us to enhance the operations at L I H I, starting with a clear scope of work. So, appreciate Tom's efforts to put that together. It can become a model for other contracts where we clearly lay out what are the operating expectations and avoid ambiguity and lack of clarity that just leads to unmet expectations. So, we will continue to work with even the City of Olympia, City of Lacey, other providers that have input on what we all need to do together to make Maple Court a successful-run facility.
So, is this, am I reading this and hearing this that like, this is sort of a brief extension to allow the contract negotiations to finalize or conclude?
That's correct.
And, and so, we're going out, you know, that's like a month, that's all, that's not, when, when was the previous?
The previous one ended June thirtieth, so this allows July, August, September, October, four months for them to...
Okay, and that's why it's eight hundred thousand.
Correct.
Because that seemed like a lot for just like one month or...
No.
For a four-month.
Yep, it's from the end of, well, beginning of July till now. It's in order to, so that we have a mechanism by which to pay them for the services they've rendered. But I think the dynamic there is the current contract and scope of work. We only want to extend it as long as we need to, and then bring back a more enhanced scope of work. Public Health is working with L I H I, what they believe is possible, so we're negotiating that through right now.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted to say I appreciate the work that, that the P H S is doing on this.
Thank you.
You guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioners' Community Reports, Public Comment. I, I had a thought the last couple times we've been working through this public comment. Would, would anyone object to putting the public comment before the community reports? And the reason I say that is because community reports, I think, are flexible in terms of how much detail we give and how little detail we give. And so, to be able to, it helps, it helps get the people waiting for their public comment up a little bit, and it also allows the Commissioners to kind of scale whether we've got a public hearing going on or the meetings run super long. It gives us a chance to decide how much detail we want to give in our community report. So, my thought would be to swap seven, seven and eight.
I'd, I'd, I'd be, I'd be fine with that, you know, not, it's not just enough to me, but I think, and that shows our willingness to kind of adjust during this trial period and, and find the, the right, the right fit for our, our new process. Yeah, I would, I would be there.
Anybody disagree with that idea? Okay, Madam Clerk, can we do that? Swap seven and eight, just as a standing piece. We'll adjourn, and then, let's see, we have two public hearings, so with these may interrupt the board meeting, depending on how long they go, but the board meeting goes. But at three thirty, we'll take up the twenty twenty-five flood hazard mitigation plan update. Is the C P A D item? If we have any... Speak to that.
This is standard internal, internal process. Okay, so we get more information in the board meeting.
Any questions or anybody have any concern about item one? Okay, item two, under Public Hearings, is a proposed ordinance to update Thurston County Code, Chapter fifteen oh six, storm and surface water utility rates. Tim Wilson, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager with Public Works. This item is a public hearing to consider public comments related to a proposed ordinance revising and amending Thurston County Code, Chapter fifteen oh six, which is the storm and surface water utility rates. The proposed ordinance will remove the stormwater rates from code and will authorize the Board of County Commissioners to instead set and or adjust the rate's resolution. The proposed ordinance provides a streamlined and efficient mechanism for periodic utility rate adjustments and aligns the rate-setting process with other programs such as our water and sewer utilities. We're considering this an administrative change only, and the action will not by itself affect or adjust current stormwater utility rates. The proposed ordinance has been posted to the Thurston County Stormwater Utility webpage, published in the newspaper of record on August twenty-first, and to my knowledge, to date, we've received no comments related to or approving the ordinance at that time. With that, I would answer any questions the board may have.
You can go, Tim. All right, that's review, and I guess looking to the clerk, do we have any items that are follow-up?
Just a note on item nine, that will get back, word about the coordination with the veterans.
That needs to, you know, just for me and email, just, yeah, that doesn't have to be a...
Item nine?
That was the, the rebuilding Thurston, the...
What did you ask?
If there are any coordination with like Mark, yeah, but doesn't have to be.
You guys could touch base on that.
Yeah, doesn't have to be something.
Really go to the, hey, anything else that anybody wanted to see follow-up on, Commissioner Klaus?
Did I hear correctly? I was still virtual on the first couple of items, but we'll be expecting e-briefs on the human resources items this week, number one and two? Okay.
Should be in your email.
Okay, perfect.
You have any questions, just like I said.
Okay, was there an item that we said we would expect in e-brief this week, or maybe I heard that wrong, so?
I think we said that there was another item that...
Criminal Just Treatment Attack came in yesterday.
Yes.
Okay.
I had missed the attachment, but I'll catch up. But yeah, there's something from yesterday on that one.
What we said is that we know yesterday was busy, so not expecting you to have all that digested. If you review that e-brief, any questions from now until the next agenda or future question?
Okay, perfect. Yeah, the email from, for the medic one came in at three forty-one. Yeah, okay.
And then the C J T A came in. Just looking at it. It came in from Dr. Fryhite, eight twenty-six.
Perfect, thank you.
Let's go back to the flood hazard mitigation, because we have Ashley here, just to touch base on that one before we move on to the September sixteenth agenda.
Working with my compliance team on, on a case.
Glad you're here, Ashley.
Thank you. You guys moved fast this morning. So, yeah, this is Ashley Rice, C P A D Director. We have a public hearing scheduled for next week for the flood hazard mitigation plan update. This is just a standard update, no, no changes to any of the flood hazard thing on the ground. It's really just a way for us to update the, the data that is contained in that plan. So, no real issues to discuss, but it is a requirement from FEMA to maintain our C R S rate, our community rating system.
And, and we do this every year?
No, it's every five years, and in the past, T R P C has done it. We actually pulled it back in-house this year. So, we're developing technical skills to be able to do this in the future.
That's why I wasn't remembering it, is I?
No, no, this is kind of a new one. But we still have to do a really fast community outreach process with a whole citizen advisory group, and they were really supportive of the, the changes.
Questions for Ashley? C R S rating for Thurston County, in case you didn't know or forgot, is like, it's the team of the best in the nation and saves our citizens tons of money and insurance and something to be very proud of, so.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you. Apologies again for stopping through my...
Thank you. Happy Tuesday.
Okay, so that covers that. Let's move on to the next item, which is an executive session. Pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one ten-one C, to consider minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price. However, final action, selling or leasing public property shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. Building acquisition is a topic, approximately thirty minutes is estimated. Board action may follow. It is nine forty-two, will be an executive session until ten twelve, with a potential extension.
All right, just making sure. We have Commissioners, there we go. All right, we're gonna allow Tom to, to join, he would...
Okay, it is ten forty-nine. We've completed the executive session on the morning's agenda. That is the last item. There's Commissioner items, but we're gonna have Commissioner check-in at eleven, so we're adjourned now, and we'll be back in ten minutes to pick up your check-in session.